Okay. We're going to go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to one MRS A four zero five. We're not doing that now.
Nope.
Okay, yeah, good, okay. And can I get an approval of the motion for approval of the school board meeting minutes? Dawn? Danielle? No, Sarah. Sorry. You'll take it? Okay. Good, any?
If you can remember back that far to that minutes of that meeting.
Right, right, right. Any questions or comments? Okay. Should I wait for her or just do the vote? So, all in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. All opposed to the motion say nay. What? It's unanimous. She's messing around. Anybody abstain? I abstain. All right. Communications and correspondence, we're not doing CHAG or behavioral, so we're looking at the permissions of the humanities trip. So Bryant, Kim.
Good evening, oh wow, holy smokes, that is definitely on. I'm Kim Bryant, I am here for the humanities trip, though I am not the only teacher represented, we have a few here as well. So this is a yearly trip that we take to New York City. It is twenty-four hours whirlwind trip from six AM to six AM. It is super exciting. So that includes twelve hours on a bus and twelve hours in New York City. While in New York City, students have an opportunity to do activities that align with their own interests. So some go to museums, some may just do some sightseeing. But we all go to see a performance on Broadway in the evening, that's our culminating activity. This year, we are going to be seeing The Outsiders, which won best musical last year at the Tonys. And I have seen it, and it is amazing. I cannot wait for kids to see this. The trip will be April twenty-ninth and thirtieth. It is a Tuesday, Wednesday. On the Wednesday that we return at six AM, the understanding is that kids do not need to attend classes that day. Inevitably, we always have at least one that still does, I swear that happens. But after being gone for so long and trying to sleep on a bus, and anyone who's ever tried to sleep on a completely packed bus knows that that just does not happen. The bus company that we are going through is Northeast Charter Tours in Lewiston. This will be a third or fourth year that we've used them, and they have been wonderful to work with. And we will continue to use them as much as we can. Their prices are fantastic, but their service is spectacular. And generally, it is a total of fifty-three people, about forty-seven students and six teachers. Those students are broken into six groups so that they can maneuver around the city way easier than forty-seven people altogether. And I think that's about it. Normally, we do go in May, so I do want to point out this is earlier than usual. We had a very difficult time finding a date in May that would work for Broadway and us. So we had to move it back a little bit, but. And then the other thing that I would like to mention, this may be the last time that we do this yearly. We may be pushing it to an every other year trip, simply because we do not have the student excitement that we have had pre-COVID, I will say. So we're managing to fill a bus, but it is not like, normally, we would have a waitlist and we would have kids, just seniors going, and then a few juniors. Now we have seniors, juniors, and we have to open it up to a couple of sophomores. So we're hoping that maybe with the every other year, it will make a little more sense there. And also note that there are definitely kids that go every year if they can, so they will be upset. But it just makes sense to probably do every other year from this point on. So if you don't see me next year, that is why.
Sounds like it's not an issue because you're having trouble getting enough kids, but how are students selected? Is it like announced to the entire school that they can sign up if they'd like?
Yes, so all seniors and juniors, it is presented to them like in an assembly-style format. They do have an opportunity to raise the money for their trip, and I did not mention that. The cost for the trip is a hundred and ninety dollars, which includes the bus and the Broadway tickets. If you've been on either a bus or Broadway ticket, you know that that's a pretty reasonable price. And obviously, we only get that price because we have a lot of people. But we do want to make sure that it is available to all students that want to go. We have scholarships available, but we also have, like I said, the opportunity to raise money. So when we first announce the trip, they're given that, the fundraiser, a lot of students raised the entire amount for their trip and are all set to go. And some maybe, you know, raised for a portion, but most students pay. I also want to say, this year in particular, I am extremely excited because we have a number of students who I don't even know if they've been as far as Portland, Maine. And have never been on a field trip, like past, like they've gone to Mount Blue. And that's about it. A bunch of these kids that I am so excited that they have the opportunity to go this year. Like, I cannot wait to be on this trip and see them experience what they're going to experience. And they are so excited about it, and they're not kids that are generally excited about school, but they are so excited about attending. And I don't think we've ever had a year when I've had so many of those kids, like the ones you really want and wish could go, and then they generally don't care. Because a lot of them are scared. They've never been to the city and it doesn't sound like something they would enjoy. And this year, we just have a bunch that have decided, you know what, I'm a junior this year, or I'm a senior this year, and I'm going to make it happen. And I think it's going to be a fantastic trip.
Great, that definitely answered my question. I appreciate you putting in the effort and organizing it and making it happen, it sounds like a wonderful thing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah.
So how many juniors and seniors are going this year?
So we have, for juniors and seniors, we have, out of the forty-seven, I believe forty are juniors and seniors, and then seven are sophomores. So seven. And the thing is, we have to fill a fifty-three-person bus in order to get the price we get. Because we've looked at, okay, we could do a thirty-five-person bus, but it costs pretty much the same amount, and then that makes the trip just that much more expensive. We try very hard to keep it under two hundred dollars, like we don't ever want to go over that. So that would push it to like two hundred and fifty dollars a person. And while, you know, it would be easier for those thirty-five, it may be more difficult for some kids who would not be able to go.
So it's fifty-three people on the bus?
Yes.
Forty-seven students?
And six teachers.
And six teachers. I'm good, thank you.
And we try, teachers are like, it's a humanities trip, but it is not just humanities teachers. We try very hard to make sure that we have teachers from all different areas. But I will tell you, it is not easy to get teachers to chaperone this trip, because a twelve-hour bus ride is not something that most people, and they have to pay. Like, we pay our own way, so kids are not paying for our spots. So to ask a teacher to pay their two hundred dollars, their one hundred and ninety dollars, which also includes tip for the driver, and then be on a bus for twelve hours, and also watch seven kids in New York for twelve hours, is kind of a hard sell sometimes. So those who do it are dedicated, wonderful people, and we appreciate them.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So I.
I'd like to suggest that we give permission to humanities trip to New York City this spring for two thousand five.
All right. Second, Dawn. Okay, and any discussion, any further discussion on that? Nope. So all in favor for the humanities trip to New York City, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. It's unanimous. That feels weird. I'm hoping it makes your job easier. You don't look it. That's right. All right, there's no public comments, no student board member reports, so are there any board member comments? Holly.
I'd like to make a motion to move the policy meeting to March tenth to address the Title IX issue that is tied to federal funding.
Do I have a second? Roger? It's Monday, two Mondays from now. No, it's not, what is it? Sunday, so it'll be March eleventh.
No, March tenth is a, March tenth is a Monday.
March tenth is a Monday, okay. So two Mondays from now. Any discussion? Tina?
We've already got a policy meeting on the books for a little further out than that. Yeah, and I don't see, I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said March twenty-fourth, right?
Twenty-fourth, right. I don't see what we save by moving it up to weeks. We're going to be fine. This is mostly a procedural change. It's rolling back what we have right now to what we had before. We did all the work that we did just a few weeks ago, so it's not that big of a change. And I don't see any sense in disrupting schedules, that's not a great day for me, and I'm the policy chair. So I would have to say, no, I'm not in favor of it at all.
Any other comments? Thank you, Tina. Thank you, Tina. Dawn?
My question is just why we want to move it up?
You're asking me?
Yes, sorry.
I feel that where it's tied to federal funding, time is of the essence. We're moving in Trump time, and Trump time changes frequently. And I don't know, I know that the funding from the state comes, the federal government normally goes through the state, but I've seen lots of information saying, if you abide by these policies or backtrack our policies to the original that we just changed, that the federal level, the funding, they won't look bad on us. If, I mean, you can laugh and smirk all you want, but this is the things that I've seen, and I'm talking right now, so.
Holly, excuse me, I just want to make sure that all board members remember to address the chair, not each other individually. Okay, thank you very much. Are you finished?
So I just feel where it's tied to funding, that time may be of the essence, and if we can move it up, why not?
Tina?
If that were true, I would probably agree with you. It is not tied to funding, we don't need to change anything right now. We can do it on the schedule that we work on, and it will be fine. We don't need to go flying around like fat in a mitten to make it work. It'll be okay.
Any other, Roger?
I can see why we would expedite it. I mean, I'm honestly angry that we masked our children for as long as we did, and our excuse was federal and state funding. Now we're going to play this game and delay our funding. I am not happy with the MPA, I am not happy with the Department of Education, nor am I happy with Janet Mills. I have two daughters, and risking federal funding for these games after we masked the least, the least affected group during the coronavirus is really mind-boggling to me and unsettling. So I am in agreement with Holly that we should move that up and move quick. It's not going to do us any favors to drag our feet, and I don't mind setting a precedent to say I care about our female athletes at RSU seventy-three.
Thank you. No. Nope.
I'm the chair of the policy committee, and I just told you that I'm unavailable on the date that you want to hold the meeting. You haven't given a real reason for having to move this up by two weeks, and I don't think that this discussion belongs in front of the school board. This is a political debate, it doesn't belong here. The fact of the matter is, is that we have no deadline, we have no crushing need to roll that back. It's largely an administrative procedure, and we can do that on the time schedule that we have set up. I don't need to be pushed into this when it's not, that your schedule isn't going to work for me to begin with. It doesn't even belong in front of the school board. Enough said.
Dawn?
I disagree, I think it should be discussed in front of the school.
Use your mic.
I think it belongs in front of the school board. I also believe that, I know the people that were at the policy meeting received the email from Drummond and Whitson, I don't know if everybody else on the board, but it tells us to go back to 2020. That's what our lawyers are telling us to do. And I think it is important to get it, and where it's not a big deal, where it's already there, we just have to go back to 2020. Why not just get it over with so we can raise our hands and say, federal government, we're doing what you told us to do? Because I have also read some things that if schools do go to these, go back, that they may be able to get federal funding directly from the federal government. So that's my opinion.
Very good. Tina?
I would offer an amendment to really cut to the chase and say, perhaps instead of having another meeting and hashing through all of this, we could just make a motion right now to roll back our policies, the relevant policies, and I believe there are four of them that may be affected, to get, make sure we have the right titles for those, and make a motion to simply adopt what we had at the beginning of the school year, before we made the changes.
Sorry, I believe that's what we were going to do.
Well, if we do that right now, we don't need a policy meeting to do that. We could just roll it back and be done with it. Then we don't have to worry about whether I'm available on a certain date or not. So that would be my, I would, I would offer that as an amendment.
You'd second it?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion?
I just am seeking clarity on if that rollback that is being proposed would cover the entirety of Section Nine, as is addressed, including that of protecting women, I think it was, I don't know the exact title, but if we are also looking to include that in the rollback.
Tina?
What we would be doing is following the legal advice that we were given, to simply roll back our policies to what they were before. And then we'll wait for everything else to settle out in the courts. If we go chasing it around, trying to decide what the courts are going to do and make our policy match up with that, we're going to drive ourselves crazy. It makes a whole lot more sense to me to just do the thing that we need to do, that's going to get us back in line with what the courts have already decided, which is to just, it's just an administrative procedure, right? So we roll that back, and then if something else changes in the future, then we'll deal with it. And, but that stuff hasn't necessarily made it through the courts, and some of it is pending legislation.
I've got them ready. A C A B? A C A A. And A C. I thought there was four too, but no, it's just, it's just three. Do you think there's four? Okay, so A C A B is harassment and sexual harassment of school employees. A C A A is harassment and sexual harassment of students. A C is nondiscrimination, equal opportunity, and affirmative action. And we think there's a fourth, and am I missing it? I brought all of my notes from the policy meeting, and I have three. So do I need to vote on the amendment?
If she was a friendly amendment, she can pull hers away if it's a friendly amendment.
We have further comment?
I just have one, I just need clarity on something, and I think Michelle hinted on this as well. If we turn our policies back on the Title IX portion of it, the main Human Rights Act, how does that play into any of this? Does anybody know?
Tina? I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought you were going to get me.
Sorry, you'll go right next, okay?
Yeah, I thought you pointed so.
Right now, that issue is in the courts, and I think it would be wasteful and unhelpful to try to figure out what the courts are going to do until the courts are done. I think we let that sit and just wait. Eventually, we'll have guidance.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm going to have Dawn go.
Okay.
Yeah, I was, because I was trying to see what the changes would be also, and making sure everybody's still protected, and I believe that they are. Because if you look at, you know, all of them, the previous Title IX, you know, the nineteen sixty-five Act for disability, and I think it's all covered. Because if you look at the protected categories, you know, they have them, I did have them up, I was talking to Scott about them earlier. But they're pretty much all, you know, sex, sexual orientation, any type of disabilities, they're all, I believe they're all covered already. That's what I think anyways.
Thank you. Holly?
I guess I need further. I just feel like the main Human Rights Act cancels out the Title IX guidance.
Tina?
That is exactly what the courts are trying to figure out. We'll, we'll have an answer on that from them eventually. Let's just sit down and let them do their job, and then we'll do ours.
Holly?
So until, so we still wouldn't be in compliance of what federal guidelines are from the Trump administration?
Tina?
Thank you. There is, there is debate at the state and federal level about that. If you want to be involved in that, it should be done, I think, at the state and federal level. I don't think it makes this school better, I don't think it helps our students, I don't think it helps our staff, and I don't think it helps our community to jump into what will definitely be a really difficult conversation when it's just not time yet. Let's let that settle first. At the state and federal level.
Roger, oops, sorry. Raji, Roger?
I think it's foolish that we would say that we're not going to discuss political things, that's literally what we do here. The book issues were political things, the mask was political things. Many people challenge the mask laws. We did not wait to see how that played out in court, and I don't think that we should do so now. And I know how everyone's going to spin this and say that I'm anti-transgender, I'm not. I love those kids just as much as the rest, and they need outlets as well. But Title IX is very important to me, I'm a father of daughters, and Title IX means something to me. When Title IX came out, women started their own leagues. This didn't happen overnight, it took time. Okay, the women put in effort to make these leagues. My recommendation to our transgender athletes is to put in that time and effort, the same that the women did. And I don't think that makes me an unreasonable person. We do have hundreds of female athletes in this school, or at least over a hundred, okay? So it's not dancing around the issue to wait and let the feds handle the issue for us. I have no problem saying right now, I want to protect our female athletes at RSU seventy-three.
Thank you. Sarah?
I haven't seen the letter that you guys have discussed about, that came from our lawyer, is that correct? No, that's fair, I guess my focus is RSU seventy-three is not an affluent school district, and I would follow legal advice on this matter, so we don't lead to any kind of unnecessary litigation until things are settled. No need for exposure.
Thank you. Elaine? Do it, do it.
Without seeing what you guys have seen from Drummond and Whitson, I, it's really hard for me to make any kind of decision. If they recommended that just going back to that 2020 policy would cover us with the feds for the moment, then I don't see any problem with doing that. They must have clarity that if they wouldn't recommend it, I wouldn't think legally, if it wasn't going to be true. Is that an interpretation of what they read? Having not seen it, it's hard to make a decision.
Tina?
The letter that we got, and I'm sorry that I didn't distribute that one, if I'd been thinking, I would have, but this was not on the agenda tonight. And I did not expect that we would be dealing with this now. But basically, what they're saying is, the changes to the Title IX, how that was going to be implemented by this administration, by the Biden administration, had finally made it through the courts, and we had implemented the new changes in order to stay current with that. Now, the changes from the Trump administration did go through the courts. That one, I'm not saying that it's going to stay forever, but for the moment, we have some clarity on that piece of it that just says, what we had in place prior to updating for the Biden administration rolls back to what it was beforehand. And so we can do that, and they said that right in the letter, that those articles, those policies that cover that can be changed back to just the way they were. The rest of it, in order to stay in line with, I mean, these are. way they were. The rest of it, in order to stay in line with, I mean, these are pending court cases, the headlines are all over the place. Until that's worked its way through, we just don't know about the rest of it, and we'll go back and make whatever changes we need to make to stay legal and in compliance at that time.
The issue I have with doing that is I'm embarrassed to be on a board that will not let our student female athletes know that we will stand up for them and protect them.
The other thing that I am wondering about with federal funding in general is knowing that the question, or sort of the unclarity I have, is like, are we running on Trump's time clock? When he chooses to expedite, are we going to be caught? Are we, how is this going to shake out? Because I know that our special education population and our school funding for lunches and meals goes through federal funding, and that's gravely concerning to me, in addition to, you know, the issue we're discussing here, that our school district has a large population of students who access special education services and also who benefit from the student free and reduced meal program. And I think that needs to be included in the discussion and be part of that decision-making process.
Any other comment? I'm buying time. Oh, Jody?
So I think it's clear that we cannot make this decision tonight, and we do need to go back to the original of when is the policy meeting getting changed to. There's too much that we don't know by not having a letter for any one of us to make any decision of just a rollback, when I haven't seen the policies specifically, what the rollback looks like. So I feel like we need to go back to the motion that was originally created to have the policy meeting moved to March 10th, which is on the table, versus creating a different policy, or a different motion, which we all don't have in front of us.
Point of order. Was that a friendly, that was suggested as a friendly amendment, and I thought Dawn had accepted it, in which case the motion is now.
Motion on the table is to move forward on this 2020.
Right.
Correct.
So we need an up or down vote on that.
Correct.
Right? And may I?
Please.
I think it's, I think it is within the purview of the, of the policy committee and not the committee, not the school board as a whole, to determine the dates that the policy committee meets. That's done by the availability of the people who are on the committee and not by order of the rest of the board.
Jody?
Tina, can you provide another date that's earlier than when you're currently meeting?
Excuse me. Please address the board when you're.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Can, can we have another date that potentially the policy committee could meet?
Would be acceptable. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, for that committee to meet earlier than when they're originally supposed to meet on the 24th, if the 10th does not work.
So the question is, Tina, is there a date that works for you other than, earlier than the 24th?
Before we can entertain another motion, we probably need to vote this one up or down.
Okay.
Yes. I just want my suggestion, which is actually kind of what Tina's saying, that we vote to go back to 2020.
That's what we're, yep.
And then we can discuss, you know, the main, you know, if we do have to make changes on our meeting that schedule.
All right. So the motion on the table, as we speak right now, if there isn't any other discussion, you're all talky-talky tonight. The motion on the table is to accept the 2020 Title IX policies. So I should probably do a roll call. So, there you go. Roll call, please.
Danielle Robinson.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
Jody?
No.
Elaine?
Yes.
Dawn Everett?
No.
Are you all James?
Yes.
Michelle Moffett?
No.
Raj?
No.
Paul?
No.
Tina?
Yes.
Orange Travis?
Yes.
That is six, yes. And Diana?
So that fails. It's good enough. All right, the motion fails. Moving forward.
No, the motion passes.
Has to be, has to be two-thirds.
No, it doesn't.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Oh, okay. You're right.
It needs to be a two-thirds vote because it was not on the agenda.
Oh, that's true.
No, don't ever say that again. All right. Okay, so, any other board member comments? Okay, Scott?
Okay, very nice stuff.
You're not prepared?
I had it all here. No, it's like, okay.
What'd you do?
Probably touching that. This first part is from Rob Taylor. The Blue Crew Robotics Team is competing at the Southern Maine Regional at Falmouth High School Saturday and Sunday, March 1st and March 2nd. And we'll be competing at the Pine Tree Regional at the Coliseum in Lewiston March 15th and March 16th. If we qualify for the New England's in April, we will come to the board for permission for out-of-state trip. But we are lucky to have two qualifiers in Maine this year. Now, over the last couple of weeks, I got to read to four different classrooms.
Use mine?
Thanks. I attended the transportation meeting. We discussed second bus run option. Norma did not feel even if we wanted to spend the extra money that she could have it ready for next year. As a compromise, it was suggested, and we'll talk about it later during the budget portion, that we get another purchase lease for another van. Tended the Buildings and Grounds Committee, and this will also be discussed later during the budget portion, looking at a four-year lease for high school gym bleachers.
All right. And administrative reports. Jenna?
Okay, good evening. I am going to be mostly looking at my paper because I have something I need to discuss. Before I go into the numbers, and I'm sure a lot of you have, you know, seen things floating around Facebook and that sort of thing. So specifically as a Section 504 coordinator, it's super important for me to be aware of, you know, the legal developments that concern Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. So in September 2024, a coalition of 17 states led by Texas filed a lawsuit challenging a rule that was finalized by the Biden administration. And in that, they talked about making 504s unconstitutional. It was a part of it. There has been a lot of public concern around this, and the states have clarified their position that they do not intend to declare Section 504 unconstitutional, but they are going after certain disabilities that they don't feel should be a disability under Section 504. So I just wanted you to be aware that, you know, there was, there were a lot of people that were very concerned that their students might no longer be able to have 504 services. And right now, the states kind of redid what they put in, and it's kind of tabled. It's under review right now. The case is under review. But like I said, they have made it clear, hopefully they continue with their word, that they want to keep 504 intact, ensuring that our students with disabilities continue to receive necessary accommodations. So a few weeks ago, I was very concerned about Section 504 and it potentially going away. But right now, they have backtracked and said, nope, that's not our goal. Instead, we're going after certain disabilities. So we'll see where that leads. It seems like every day, there's, you know, something new that changes. So it's just another one of those situations where we just need to wait it out. So at the high school, last month, we had 40 students with active 504 plans and one in referral. This month, we have 39 students with one in referral. At the middle school, last month, we had 23 students. This month, we have 23 students with 504 plans with one in referral and one anticipated. Last month, we had 22 students with active 504 plans and 22 students this month with none in referral at this time. And at the primary school, last month, we had five students with 504 plans. In this month, we have seven with active 504 plans and two in referral and one anticipated. We did have a handful of students that either moved to another district or left their 504 services in order to receive special ed services. The accommodations weren't enough, and they required some specially-designed instruction. So we have around 91 students right now, and I have a handful of new referrals that I'm processing right now. So that's where we're at with 504.
Do we have any questions or comments for Jenna? Tina?
Yeah, thank you for the report. Are those, are the disabilities that they're concerned about in this lawsuit, is this primary, or this maneuvering, is this primarily behavioral-based disability?
Nope, it is specifically gender dysphoria.
Ah, thank you.
That's what they're trying to get rid of right now, so.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jenna.
Thanks.
And Norma?
Hello. Don't have a whole lot to report tonight. I had a Transportation Committee meeting, as Scott said, on February 3rd. We discussed a lot of different transportation needs and issues with transportation. We've had some transfers of jobs due to job changes and moving of employees around. We still have one bus driver out for medical reasons. Thanks to great staff during the cold spell, they've been making sure the buses are starting in the morning and getting them out on the roads. I just want to say praises to my crew right now. If you guys have noticed, our buses are cleaner than ever right now. They're all shining more than ever. We've had three specific people that have been really putting some time and effort into making them look a lot better and appreciate, you know, making our buses last longer. So we've lost one of our van drivers due to a medical event at home on February 14th. His spouse also works for the district. This is a great loss to the district, the Transportation Department. He absolutely loved the students he transported, sorry, and called the van position his dream job. He retired from another company after 38 years, and he enjoyed coming in every day and driving for us. He actually came in at 4:30 every morning to go to Norway to get some kids for us. We have one new hire for a custodian bus driver who's working on his school bus endorsement. On February 19th, he received his school bus permit. One of our custodian bus drivers went for his school bus license on Wednesday, February 12th. He received his license, and he will now be a spare bus driver. So things are looking up in the Transportation Department. We have a total of 21 out-of-district students that we're transporting. Seven McKinney-Vento students have found homes. We're no longer transporting them. That's something that's a big deal. And so that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions for Norma? Dawn?
Did we get the new bus back yet?
Yes. Yeah, hopefully, fingers crossed. I mean, there's some, like, cosmetic stuff, and I always send it back to Bailey's when it comes back to make sure that everything's on the up and up. I talked to Chad this morning, and it should be good to go next week. We just have to put some stuff in it for the wheelchairs and stuff, but, and make sure the first aid kits and blankets and all that are in there, so. But it should be on the road next week.
No need for a snorkel anymore?
I hope not.
Any other questions? Elaine?
Not a question, but our sincere condolences to your whole department, because I know it means a lot to all of your drivers and all the people that work for you. They're a family, and I know it affects the kids as well.
Yes, it does.
Sincere, sincere sympathies to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you, Norma.
high school credential, with many others on track to graduate in June. We continue to identify barriers to enrollment and retention for learners, such as transportation, access to mental health resources, and food insecurity. We have secured onsite direct client services through STAPR, which is the Sexual Assault Prevention and Response Services, once a month, and we're beginning telehealth counseling appointments for students starting in March. We are utilizing Western Maine Transportation once a week for door-to-door service, as well as having our van pick up students for our managed enrollment classes on Wednesday mornings. With the continuation of grant funding for the countywide digital literacy program, we've created a three-year plan with a few new proposed initiatives. So I'll just roll out three right now. One is working with local municipalities, if they wish, to make town websites more accessible and user-friendly for residents to find information and focus on engaged citizenship. Two, work collaboratively with the Jay Livermore and Livermore Falls Chamber of Commerce to offer tech-based business classes, such as QuickBooks, and offer additional technology support for new or inexperienced technology users. And three, partner with Connected Nation to bring a Teens Teach Tech program to greater Franklin County schools. This is not an immediate rollout and would require significant planning, but we do serve, we would hope to serve middle school and high school students, an alternative learning option for students to help community members learn how to use new devices. Also on the grant fund, we received an email update last week from the Maine Development Foundation. So we are sub-grantees of the Maine Development Foundation for congressionally-directed spending funds for the CDL program. They received a condition of award notice from the Department of Labor, and now we just wait to sign an official contract to draw down funds in FY '26. So if you're new to the board or just need a refresher, this is a grant that we applied for in 2023 to address the findings of a needs assessment in our region. There are no other CDL Class A classes in greater Franklin County. This grant funding will cover all necessary expenses minus personnel to start a CDL program for three years. The funding also allows what we call equity stipends. So if someone is working and there is a fear of loss of income to enroll in a class, if they're eligible, that won't be an issue for them. The classroom portion of our medical assisting program will be wrapping up in the next two weeks, and our students will enter into their clinical rotations at the hospital. There are currently four paid apprenticeships for medical assistance at Maine Health Franklin, and they are eligible to apply if they want to take on a full-time role while they're still in school. And lastly, we'll be holding interviews for the Culinary Arts Program and starting the program at the end of March. So there's still time to apply if anyone's interested.
Thank you, Robin. Any questions or comments for Robin? Roger?
I don't know what we did to deserve you and your staff, but we appreciate you guys. That's excellent that you're doing that. And I think the owners of the old Foss Jewelers building will appreciate you training some local CDL drivers as well. They've lost their roof a few times.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Maintenance, Wayne?
Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. Last time we met, I reported that the vaporizer was going to be up and running at the middle school. Happy to say that it is up and running. It's a great success. No boilers going down due to propane. It's a great success, no boilers going down due to propane pressure. It's been a long road, but we're taking care of it. The grounds and maintenance crews have been busy in the past month chasing snowstorms. They've been dumping small amounts of snow for us. I want to thank them for keeping the buildings clear. There's snow and ice. It's a challenging, it's challenging at times, as it seems to be on weekends, and they're always willing to drop their plans and come in to make sure the buildings are open for us day and night. I also want to say thank you to the building custodians. It's quite, it's quite a cleanup after all the events. We just got done with basketball and, and such, so. Schools get used most every night for something, whether it be practices, games, or just special events, that custodians have to clean the classrooms and also clean up after these events. So it can be quite the chore to get all that accomplished and be ready for the next school day. I currently have four custodians out due to illness, or I have one with a bereavement. We're making the best of it. Remarkable crew that we have here, so. I met recently with the Building and Grounds Committee, and we discussed bleachers for the high school gymnasium. I received two quotes, one from Hussey Bleachers and the other from A-plus Athletics. The new bleachers would be ADA compliant with six cutouts for wheelchairs and hold approximately four-hundred-and-ninety-plus or minus students-spectators. They'd be secured to the floor, and it would be on the weight room cage side of the gym. The current bleachers originally, to the, original to the building of nineteen sixty-nine, and they've gotten, we've definitely got our money's worth out of them, for sure, so. With the inspections that we've had, they've been, we never pass inspection since I've been here since two thousand and six, due to the fact that they don't make the, they don't make the parts for it anymore, and they're not in compliance, so they won't make parts for our bleachers anymore. So that's a big, it's a big issue for us. Hope everybody agrees that we need to, need to address them before somebody gets hurt, definitely. We also discussed replacing the dump truck that we have now, because it no longer passes inspection. The frame and cross-members are rotted out of it. We're looking to buying through the Ford Fleet Program that saves us a bit of money. I've received two quotes on the truck. We'll be, we'll be doing a three-year loan, so it won't be such a significant burden on the community, on our taxpayers. Rely, rely on the truck quite often to haul home other materials to save us money. It comes in handy on many occasions for spring cleanups. The old dump truck, I'd like to put out the bid as soon as we get a, a new truck delivered, so. So we can put that towards as well, so. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions? Thank you, Wayne. Any questions for Wayne? Thanks again.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Curriculum and Technology, Chris?
It's been a while. So we've been meeting with curriculum teams. Lately, it's been interesting. We've, as probably people have seen, we've had some illnesses, so it's, sometimes it's hard to get everybody together. But we should, hopefully soon, with spring coming, we'll get through those and, and get back on track with everybody. Couple of highlights. We did get to attend a great workshop at UMF on February seventh, myself and several teachers from the district. Got to go to a workshop, District Computer Science Visioning Workshop, which was put on, and it, and it's really to look at our computer sciences and how we can, the best way to get that to all the kids in the district. Obviously, it's easier at the high school, because they actually have classes, but at the lower levels, you know, it's how to integrate it and, and make sure kids get those skills all the way through. Great thing was, the person that was running it was Shelby Bryant, who is from this area, went to schools here, so I'm sure some of you remember. I didn't remember. She'd all, she'd been all grown up, but she didn't look the same as when she was younger. And then, as far as looking into technology, we were, we were having fun with Power School. I think the last time I talked to you, I let you know that Power School sent us a letter and said, "Oh, you're not one of the ones." So, so we decided, because we trust them so much, decided to check out Power School's school ourselves and looked at the log files, and we found this interesting log file, and it just didn't look right. So we sent that, we actually had to download that and send it to Power School and said, "Can you look at this? And, you know, maybe we're wrong, but can you look at it?" And that took about a month, and then they got back and it says, "Well, yeah, it looks like you might have been breached." So, so I think letters just started going out to people that said, "If, you could have Experian for, you know, a year or whatever, if, if you'd like to," and a link to join it. So that's kind of Power School's answer to help alleviate this. There wouldn't have been anything, I mean, they talk about social security numbers, we don't have that in there. It wasn't where the medical necessarily would have been. It was all demographic kind of stuff, but, but they couldn't, they still, to this time, they, at the beginning, they said they were going to be able to give us a list of maybe anybody that specifically had been breached, but so far, no names. And then, the other thing I want to admit, we are trying to, watching as closely as we can what's going on with the federal money things, because a lot of times, you hear in the paper, everything, it always mentions special ed and, and the lunch program, which are very important. But we also have to remember, we get about, somewhere around five-hundred-thousand dollars under title funds, which is directly related to our, our at-risk population. I mean, and those funds pay for six teachers and seven ed techs in the district, so, so we're really trying to just see where they're going with that, so we know what's going to happen, because obviously, that would be devastating to us.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Thanks again. All right, Food Service, Laura?
All right, thank you. So in Food Service, since we last met, we have interviewed and put out a proposal, and we have a new hire coming onboard next week. We're really excited to welcome her to RSU seventy-three Child Nutrition Department. We will cross-train her, as well as other staff members, to prepare for our 2026 school year, where we're going to have lots of shifting as to who is in which kitchen due to our retirement staff members. The middle school recently received some new kitchen equipment, got a nice stand mixer over there and commercial immersion blenders, which are lifesavers for the shoulder and for working with mixing and stuff, and they have successfully been testing lots of new recipes, and the middle school's been making their own homemade pizza dough now, as well as muffins and other breakfast items. So we're excited to see where our staff take that program moving forward. Next week, I expect them to start with homemade breads and rolls. I have been working quite closely over the past, I would say, three, four months with the design and quote team for our cafeteria renovations, as well as our, the sales representative on trying to get the finalizations done on these projects that we're working on. During this past vacation, I had four staff members who attended their Surf Safe Training in Mount Blue, further enhancing their commitment to food safety. Over the break as well, a new hot water booster was installed at the elementary school, and I want to thank Wayne and his team, as well as Phil Mori and his company for their hard work on getting that project done. Myself and two staff members recently participated in a scratch cooking webinar through the Institution of Child Nutrition, which provided valuable insight to enhancing our meal programs. Tomorrow, I will be attending a Lead to Success training session at UMaine in Augusta, and we're looking forward to look for ways that we can continue to improve our department and services and do everything we can for our students. So that's all I have.
Thanks. Any question for, questions for Laura?
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. All right, next up is Board Chair Report. I really don't have anything to report. I do, you wanted me to mention binders. We're missing, we have, what, two people? Andrew needs his binder. I don't know who the other person is, but, oh, very good. Get your binders. I'll, I'll get a message out to Andrew. All right. Next up is Committee Reports. Are we doing, we don't have a chair for tran, Transportation. Tina, do you want to give a Policy Committee Report, or are we good?
Thank you. We had a handful of the Series B policies, which have to do with the board responsibilities and whatnot, and we basically went through those and said, "Not much to update here. We're pretty good." And date-stamped them and put them back.
Very good. Any questions for Tina? Thank you. Could I get a motion for the superintendent's nomination to the position of Social Emotional Learning RTI teacher? Elaine? Tina?
What's the name?
And it is for Amy Fortier. Any questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The motion carries. All right, Budget Overview, Mr. Albert.
There you go. We'll see. All right, that's good. Okay. First off, I'll just quickly go over the, the total that we are looking at. We started at seven point one percent. We were able to bring that down to five point seven five percent. That's an increase from last year's budget to this year's budget. After we met with the Transportation Department, not Department, excuse me, Team, it was suggested that we put a, another lease van into the budget. If we, if we do that, that would put our budget up to a five-point-eight-two percent increase. That is not in the budget as you see it right now, but it would be put in afterwards. And then, if we were to do the bleachers, which was suggested by the Buildings and Grounds Committee, that would also be, that would be a four-year lease. That would put us at fif, five-point-nine-nine percent. What we're suggesting to do for that, if the board approves, is we would have a separate vote on that when it goes up for, in the town meeting, as well as the referendum, so that it would be separate, so that you'd have the vote for the whole budget, you'd have the vote for, this is the year we have to have a vote for whether or not we want to stay having the town meeting and referendum. That has to be voted on every three years, so that's on, would be on the ballot this year. And then, but also, if you guys approved it and the town, they approved it at the town meeting for the school budget, third, the third thing on the referendum would be, do we want to take out a four-year loan for the bleachers for the high school gym? In the past, we've done stuff like that for the elevator and for the, actually, the football field bleachers a few years ago. We think it's important to have, but we don't want it to necessarily interfere with the overall budget passing. So it's up to whether the people in the town really want it. If they want it, great, go for it. So that's what the overall budget looks like at the moment. System Administration, sometimes you see, you got the updates. Our system administration has gone up twenty-eight thousand dollars. The big one, one of the big ones is our liability insurance has gone up four thousand and sixty-four dollars. That's twenty-five percent that we've budgeted. That's been pretty accurate in the past. We don't have a definite number yet, but that's been pretty accurate in the past, right, Crystal? Yes, okay. Oh, page, yeah. Should be page one of the budget presentation, or you can look under Section One, Page One. School Board, Superintendent's Office, and Business Office is, is what is considered I mean, the rest of that is salaries and benefits that everybody has in that group. And then, also, under Professional Credits this year, I, I put in for Professional Credits, I need to take a class in order to keep my certification up. But you can have, if anybody has any questions on anything in that area tonight, that's fine, and if you don't have it tonight, feel free to call, email, and we'll be, we can bring it up at the next meeting as well for people. Does anybody have any questions on the system administration at this point in time? Okay? TJ?
All right, Spruce Mountain High School, TJ. Oh, there he is.
Hi, everyone. If you could turn to page four.
Hi, everyone. If you could turn to page 4. I'm going to go through my items that are gonna, that I have the control to kind of change, so you'll notice it will skip around a little bit. It's really just between page 4 and page 9 for me, and then the last part with Mr. Keller will be on page 17. So on, the first one that I have is the Admin Postage. It is number, line number 97. It has gone up $1,200. That's due to the postage increase. Those things happen. It's just what we need to do for the upcoming year. If you turn to page 9. Page 9 is regarding our regular instruction, Spruce Mountain High School regular instruction. If you look at line number 194. 194. It's an increase of $11,368. That has to do with some contracting services that we have, also a little increase with the JMG specialists that we have. And a good portion of that is related to the Foster Tech Center, a way that we are helping pay for our Foster Tech teacher that we have here, doing a phenomenal job. If you look at line number 197, we are looking at the regular instruction for general supplies. It is a decrease of $13,200. That is due to the Foster Tech teacher. No longer need, we don't need to spend the money on the supplies for that programming that he is doing because Foster Tech has taken that over. Okay? That's a, that's a big decrease here. And then the last one that I can control, which is the 190, line 199 for regular instruction for equipment. It is our Science Department's turn to get a room with new desks and whatnot. We rotate this for a reason. That way, it's not such a shock when we do all of them at once. So every year, we put that in, and science is going to be a little bit more because they have to have the fire retardant tables and things like that. Okay? And I'm going to have Mr. Keller come up, and he's going to go over the athletic, oh, yep.
Sorry. Does anybody have any questions? Tina?
Thank you. I'm looking at page 5, line 106. It's your textbooks.
Yep.
And I'm noticing everybody else wants more money and you want less, and I'm just checking in on that.
Yep. If I, let me pull it up. You said page what?
Uh, page 5.
What line number?
106.
That's what my teachers requested. I, I know that we no longer have the springboard books, so those things aren't part of it. And that's, that's what they asked for.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Mark?
I'm going to have Mark come up.
Good evening. I do have increases in the Spruce Mountain High School Athletic Budget. They are all on page 17. We have an increase on line 372, which is Athletic Stipends. That is an increase due to contracted points and the Education Association contract and the addition of a wrestling coach. Last year, the board approved a wrestling program at the middle school that is currently underway. There are 21 athletes that started the season, including eight?
Eighth graders?
Eight eighth graders. Eight eighth graders. One of those actually qualified for New England tournament.
Nice.
Just this past weekend. So we're looking at extending that program to the high school. We have also had a couple of student athletes that have participated over at Dirigo in a co-op program this year. It did not go as well as we had hoped. We started out with six, added a seventh, and then really, the big issue became travel. And some students, several students dropped out. We ended up with, and one actually transferred to Dirigo. So started with seven, ended with just two. I firmly believe that several of those athletes would have continued had we had the program here, so we'd like to offer that next year. But along with that comes much of the, the remaining increase. Line 379 is under General Supplies. We will need uniforms for our wrestling program. That would be an increase of about $2,300. Line number 380 is, is really the big one. We need a wrestling mat. So, it's a, it's a big cost. It's $16,500. That includes the, the carts that are used to move those around, to make sure that we're taking good care of them, and then we're not sliding them across the floor. That will also help out with our cheering mats as well. And unfortunately, that's just a one-time thing. That's what, what they're going for, so. And then, line 381, which is using fees. Adding in wrestling, each tournament that you participate in has wrestling fees. Wrestling's can be a pretty expensive sport when it comes to officials. And where, there's also a 2.7 increase in the Consumer Price Index, which is how the MPA contracts with the officials' boards throughout the state. Instead of basically negotiating with the, the officials, the 17 or 18 different officials' boards, they've negotiated with all of them all at the same time to, to go with the Consumer Price Index. So those are our increases in the athletic budget at the high school.
Any questions for Mark? Roger?
Do you know roughly the lifespan of one of those wrestling mats?
They last, if you take good care of them, they last a long time.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Is that Michelle? Michelle?
I don't mean this to sound a bit silly, but what size are the mats? Like, how big are we talking?
They're 42 by 42.
Okay, so you can have several matches per mat?
Well-
Essentially?
No.
No, okay.
It's actually, that's the official size of a high school wrestling mat.
Okay.
In the event that you do host a meet where there are several teams and, and you have a lot of wrestling matches, you usually bring in a mat from some other school.
Okay.
To get the help to do that.
Thank you.
We do have a wrestling tournament coming up here in a couple of weeks with the youth, and if you were to come in and see what was going on, they would have two or three mats set up across the gym.
Okay.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Miss, no, where are we? Chris? Middle school.
All right. Good evening. Actually, I only have a couple of item, line items this year. On page number 4, line number 82, Administrative Dues and Fees, that's going to take a decrease of $3,900. This is just basically due to, that was in there prior to me becoming principal, and I haven't been able to spend that down, so, you know, I can get rid of that. And then, on line, oh, sorry. How do I do this? Page 7, line 165. My regular instructional supply line went up by $1,500. And then, our last increases are going to do with our athletic program. Those are on page 16, lines 354, 355, 356. And those are essentially all the wrestling program as well. It's mats, official fees, officials for all sports have gone up, and then also general supplies, uniforms, as long as other things.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Chris?
Yeah.
Do we have a wrestling mat for the middle school?
What we have, Roger, is a, we bought a practice mat last year, and that's what we've been using. I'm going to actually help out Mark with the high school mat too, so we're going to kind of use it together.
Awesome, okay.
During the high school season. The practice mats that we have are going to come up here to the high school, so they can use them too, so we're going to kind of try to work together.
Okay, awesome. That was my next question.
The middle school and the high school alternate seasons, so they don't run concurrently.
Yeah.
So-
High school's in the winter, middle school goes from February to the end of March.
Excellent.
And then, the last thing would be class sizes? Yeah, go ahead.
Jody?
Sorry. So is the equipment budget here to help with wrestling at the high school?
And also help at the middle school. We still have to buy some more uniforms.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
That was a larger number than we originally anticipated coming out. Do you want it?
Unless they ask that question, you don't have to go over class sizes. If it comes to a point next meeting when we're looking at concerns about what the overall cost is, that's usually a time that we share what we have of class sizes.
Perfect.
Thank you. All right, elementary. Pat?
So just ignore the class size paper that I gave you until next week. So I only had three items changed. If you go to page 3, line 60, Professional Courses, that's for me, and there's just no way with my youngest daughter and her soccer schedule and recruiting that I'm going to be able to take all those, so I just reduced it by a class. So that's why it went down $2,100. Page 6, line 145 is Instructional Supplies for the Teachers. It went up $1,400. Just the cost of, everything's gone up. And that's just to maintain what we have each year. And then the last one is page 7, line 148, AV Materials. Normally, I carry about $3,800 in that line in case our laminator dies, but I, you cannot have an elementary school and no laminator. I would be toast. But the middle school has an extra one that he's giving me, so I decreased it by $2,000. Keep $1,800 in there for maintenance and repair and supplies for the film. And those were the three that I had.
That's it?
That is it.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Pat? Thank, oh, Elaine?
Thank you.
I know. Trust me. I put it out there because you always ask. So if you have questions about that next week, I'll be more than happy to.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
And Primary School, Darcy?
Guys, I only have one. And that is line 121. I don't know what page number that's on. Instructional Supplies, an increase of $5,000. We have the five ad hoc committees, and they have had zero budget, and we really, they would really appreciate having some sort of money to go towards their action plan and goals for their committee. It is all about school improvement, whether it's attendance and doing initiatives, and right now, we've, have a lot paying out of pocket to do some of those fun things. We have family nights, and we just would like to have a little cushion to be able to fund those projects. Outdoor learning was another one, so.
Great. Any questions? Tina?
Thank you. I have two items here. One is line 41 from page 2. And that showed, huh?
I don't have it in front of me. What was that?
Okay, and then I've got line 121.
That's the one I just did.
And that shows on here is a decrease of $5,000.
Oh, no, it should be in-
And in the budget, so it shows an increase of $5,000. It's supposed to be an increase, right?
Yeah, it's supposed to be an increase.
Okay. Let me just change that right there. All's good.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
On the handout?
Right. Which one is the misprint?
The $5,000.
The $5,000 for line number 121 on page 5?
Right, that's, that's supposed to be an addition of $5,000.
It is.
Right, but then on the, the line before that, line 41, that doesn't, do we know what that, that is? That doesn't belong in here at all, right? Okay, it's just an error. Okay, good deal.
Yes, ma'am?
So is their postage supposed to have something there?
It just has one item.
On line number 41?
She still has, she has $1,200. It's just not more than last-
Oh, it's just the same. Perfect.
It's the same. That, that last column is up with it.
Right, right, right. Yeah, my bad. Uh, any, have we settled out? Any other questions for Darcy? Thank you. She's trying to run away. All right, Special Education, Sherry?
Hello. I wish I only had one item that changed. So on pages 20, 21, and 22, it's Contracted Services. For, it's split into three different schools. It's K to 8 contracted services, but it's separated into Primary, Elementary, and Middle School. There's an increase of $1,000 on each line, and that is our contracted services. For BCBA, we have Augmentative Alternative Communication Specialists that come in, and some of our evaluators have increased their rate. On page 22, tuition for our special purpose private schools for K to 8, which is line 504, and tuition for private schools in 9 through 12. That's an overall increase of $53,641. We did have some students move from the K to 8 line to the 9 through 12 line, and so there was a significant increase in the 9 through 12 line, but a decrease in the K to 8 line. Tuitions also go up. They tell me to plan for a 6% increase each year, so, and those tuitions are set by the state, not by the individual schools. On page 24, Speech, K to 8, lines 543, 544, 45, 46, and 550. Those are benefits, salaries and benefits for a, an RSU 73 hired position. I was not able to do that, and we are contracting for all of our speech services. So those lines were all combined into contracted speech services, and it's a little bit more. The rate is going up, so it's an overall increase of $3,795.83. But there was salary and benefits from our provider that retired last year and moved to contracted. On, I believe it's page 25, Contracted OT Services for K to 8. There's no impact there. It moved, our position moved from 6 through 12 to K to 8. So you'll see one line is zeroed out, and then the next line is increased, so it equals each out. Those are lines 563 and 571. On page 26, line 580, for Contracted PT or Physical Therapy Services in Grades 9 through 12. We have an increased need for physical therapy at that level, and so there's an increase of $10,000 there. On page 27, lines 612, 613, and 614, that is our K to 8 Behavior Contracted Services. That covers our BCBA and evaluator needs at that level. Rate increases for 16,500 more for next year. And then on page 28, line 633, that is also the BCBA consultation for the behavior program at the high school, and that's an increase of $7,000.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Oh, there we go, Michelle?
So just to clarify, Sherry, are you-
So just to clarify, Sherry, are you telling me that, in my understanding, that we had people who were salaried in district for services that are now going to be moved to consul, or not consul, but like out of district consultants that we hire in, like telehealth?
Well, so we have two contracted speech providers who are in person. And then our third, our provider in middle school and high school, we have what's called high-tech service. So the therapist is telehealth, but there is an in-person facilitator that that same company provides.
Okay. And the difference of those two is about three K is what you said, three grand? The difference of the?
So I took all the salary and benefits from the in-person?
Yes.
And then it went three thousand more than that?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions for Sherry? Thank you. All right. Curriculum and technology. Chris?
Curriculum is your first sheet, so I'll go with that one first. And that's on page five. It's really the district, the curriculum textbook lines, line one oh three, one oh five, and one oh six. On line one oh three, and one oh five, the elementary and the K two textbook lines. Currently, the language arts curriculum team is looking at a comprehensive reading program that'll provide consistency and reduce the gaps and skills for students. And so this is, this is an increase because of that cost of a new program and also the professional development that'll go along with that to provide for teachers. We're still in discussion on whether, you know, we're thinking now we'll probably roll it out next year, K to two, and provide in-service for three to five teachers to learn the program as well. And then the following year, roll it out three to five, just so we can do it and not be overwhelmed, have everybody overwhelmed with a big new program all at once. And then the textbook line at the high school was down thirty-one hundred. I thought TJ was going to cover all those textbooks.
He did.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I heard. No, it's really because, it is because the high school, they used to purchase a springboard program for English, which they're not, that program actually went away. They don't make it anymore. And it was a costly program. So now they're not using that same amount of money to do that anymore. So that's curriculum. Keep going?
Don't have to. Jody has a question?
Is there, is there reasoning that they're looking at a new program versus the one that they're currently using?
Well, yes, because currently, we don't really, technically, we don't have a program right now. It's, and that's, it's not that teachers haven't been teaching reading and doing a great job at it and everything they can. But it's teacher by teacher. So we don't have, and we noticed this this year, especially because the middle school is using the Star Assessment, and it's looking at gaps, skill gaps. And they were seeing a lot of skill gaps that they were coming into the middle school with. And it's really because we just haven't had a consistent program that touches everything and grows as the kids go up. So we want to make sure that we have a program that actually makes sure it touches the skills so when they get to the middle school, they have those skills in place.
And then all the teachers, okay, all the teachers would be all on the same page with this new program?
Right.
From K to five?
Yep, from K to five.
Thank you.
Michelle?
Do you have the name of the program?
No.
Okay. Is that something that can be shared?
Because right now, we haven't, there's three programs, there's three major programs we're looking at right now. And luckily for us, all three of the programs are also being used by districts in Western Maine. So the language arts committee is going to go visit those schools and decide on which one they think, you know, get feedback from them on what they're doing and if it's working for them. And then also make sure it's something that'll work for our district. And then, once we narrow it down to one program, but I could certainly get you the three programs we're looking at.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Elaine?
I've been fortunate to work with this committee. This is much needed. People have really tried to, it's been an approach to let teachers craft their own, following what we have for curriculum and demands for services. Everyone around us, and I think everybody's gotten to the place that everybody can still put their own personality on this, but we all need to ensure that these steps are all being covered. And that's what the teachers want. That's what we know is going to work. And I, we want something that increases test scores. We want to address that. That's bottom line. And everybody's been amazing with looking at this. There are all the teams that are visiting other schools, looking at these packets, are going out with a checklist, making sure, and all the companies say they cover these things. Let's talk to the people that are in the ditches doing the work. Is this really good? What would you, they're excited. And instead of trying to, we could roll this up by saying one grade will do it this year, one will do, and lessen the financial pain. What we're doing is getting everybody up to speed. K through two one year, three through five the next. It's costly, but I think we're doing what's best for the kids. So just wanted to throw my two cents.
Thank you. Jody?
So can you confirm, because I'm seeing textbooks K to two, is this also doing the three to five? Like, we're buying them? We're just not going to do it for another year?
Well, in, when we were doing the budget, the language arts committee hadn't decided exactly where we're going to put it yet. So I put money in both, just to be safe.
Yep.
So it's easy enough if we buy just all the books for K two this year, then I can shift that money to the K two line and buy all the books. And then whatever PD as well that comes with that program, we want to make sure it covers K through five. So they get the PD, even though they might not be starting it until the following year.
Okay. So like next year, we wouldn't see another line with textbooks three to five, or would we?
You could see just the three to five next year.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Did you have anything for technology, Chris?
Sure.
Don't have to.
For technology, on page twelve, not anything too big. Page twelve, line two sixty-three, professional development travel. That's just down two thousand this year. Because we usually, when Power School comes to Boston during the summer, we try to send at least a couple texts to go take that, because you do learn quite a bit. It's too bad it's not in Boston this summer. I'm sure that'll be a fun time to listen to Power School. But it's not in Boston this year. Usually every other year or so, so we won't be going this year. So I just took it out of the budget. As well as on line two sixty-four on the same page, general supplies, we're just not, we seem to have enough supplies. And usually the schools are pretty good. If we need anything, we kind of get something from them. So we're down two thousand there. And then on line two sixty-five on the same page, computer software, it's not really a bunch. We do use quite a bit of software in the district. But when we do find if there's something that's really not being used, you know, we try to track as much as we can what the use of something is. And if something's not really being used, then we just get rid of that so we don't have to pay for it. And so we're down three thousand this year. It's not a lot. But and then on page fourteen, line three twenty-six, contracted assessment, we're actually up seven thousand. And that is because right now, the Department of Ed pays the cost of our NWEA assessment in grades three through eight and ten, because it's the, it's the state main through-year assessment is the NWEA. So they pay for that. But that contract with NWEA is up right now. So the Department of Ed is going through the process of deciding if they're going to stay. They put out RFPs. They're deciding if they're going to stay with NWEA or go with somebody else. So to be safe, I put in what the cost to cover three through eight and grades ten would be in NWEA, just in case the state decides to go with a different vendor. So, which we're hoping they don't, but.
Roger? Oh, Tina? Which one? Okay.
Very good.
I'm a little confused. If they, they pay for the testing now, but if they were to go with a different vendor, then they might not pay for?
They would not. They would definitely not pay for NWEA if they're not, if it's not the state test.
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay. I understand.
Roger?
So I guess my question, this may be an uneducated question, but if we may not use it or be required to use it, why would we want to pay for it?
NWEA has been the assessment we've used as a district, even before the state. We used to have NWEA for district, for data, for teachers and administrators. And the state had a different assessment. And this was probably four or five years ago. And then, and that was the main, I can't remember the name of it now. And we didn't have to pay for that part. So we were, we used to pay for NWEA to use as a district. And then when the state started using NWEA for the state, they picked up hard that cost. We still pay ourselves for K to two and nine, nine, eleven, and twelve. And so the understanding was that if we didn't, if the state wasn't going to use NWEA, we would still use NWEA for our own purposes. It certainly is, I mean, yeah, you could get rid of NWEA and not. It would just be an assessment we wouldn't have then.
Okay.
All right, Elaine?
We were giving NWEAs back when I was teaching fifteen years.
Yeah, quite a while.
Whatever, ages ago.
Did you say NWEA?
NWEA.
NWEA.
The New England.
I get it.
Yeah. It's a, it's a, it's a test. And they actually take it on the computer, and the test adjusts to their, their level. So if this test, I got this one wrong, the test, am I wrong, Pat?
Well, for the state, for the state test, it doesn't, the state, it only lets it adjust within a certain grades. But for like K to two still, it adjusts for them.
The teaching, the teaching part of that is you get to see each kid, for those kids that are not being assessed by the state, you get to see where, exactly where they are. And then it can help instruct, tell you where we need some instruction and fill some gaps. The state used to give the MEAs, and they probably were giving them when you were in school. And every year, it was a different test. They'd make up something new. And it's really hard to compare apples and oranges each year.
Oh, no.
They finally moved, I, it was crazy, drove me insane.
I used to have a teacher that said, you can't compare apples and oranges.
They were probably old too, weren't they?
Your husband.
Then we went to, they finally said, okay, we'll go to the NWEA after, for ten years. We'd said, stop this change in the test every year. We're trying, we don't want to have to teach the test. But every year, we'd come out and look terrible because they changed everything. It was crazy. This has been a really good way to do it, and I hope they don't, when you were saying they're going to change.
Yep.
It levels the playing, it's equal playing across the board if everybody's doing the exact same assessment.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. It's, and the thing is, once they start that test in kindergarten for second, they advance with it. But they know by third grade, this is what we're going to be doing. And they're tuned into it. When they would get the MEAs, there was a shock factor each year, like, what am I supposed to do? You know, and of course, they, big secret, they wouldn't tell the teachers. So this is, yeah.
Any other questions for Chris? Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, transportation. Norma? Yeah, I was told, Elaine, I was told by your husband that you can't be doing apples and oranges. There's no such thing as an orange. It was great. Made us laugh every time. Norma, thank you.
So on, I don't have much really for transportation. Page twenty-nine, line six fifty, increase of five thousand dollars due to the Bailey's contract increase per hour this year. So it's going up from eighty thousand to eighty-five thousand.
Oh, wow.
Did you find it? And then page nine, line six fifty-nine, increase of three to five thousand gallons of propane, which the impact is like seventy-five hundred dollars because we plan on purchasing a propane bus. Page twenty-nine, line six sixty, an increase of vehicle fuel for twenty-five hundred dollars for special needs transportation and McKinney-Vento transportation increase. And then page twenty-nine, line six sixty-three, lease principal, twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and sixty-five, current bus lease agreement for the bus that we bought last year, thirty-six thousand dollars for a purchase of the propane bus lease agreement. And then sixteen thousand, seven hundred and three dollars for the purchase of the van lease three-year agreement. That's basically to save us money. So it'd be a total impact of fifteen thousand for this year's budget.
Could you, does anybody have any questions? Could you talk about the McKinney-Vento? Am I saying it right?
McKinney-Vento is a law that we have to abide by for anybody that is in inadequate housing. That means if they don't have running water, power, electricity, or couch surfing, or living in a shelter, we have to provide them with transportation, even if they attend one day in our school district.
Okay. Thank you.
That's out of district. So like we're, we were transporting some kids from Norway. So.
All right. I heard somebody go, what's McKinney-Vento? Oh, very good. Any other questions for Norma? Thank you.
All right.
You did it.
Thank you.
We're almost done. Okay. Would entertain a motion for a five-minute recess. Dawn, Elaine, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. All right. All right. I love doing that, I need a heavier gavel. All right, so next up is facilities and maintenance, Wayne?
Hello again.
Hello again.
Now, I'm a little upset with Scott cuz he said I just had to stand up here and answer questions, so, but. We'll start off with Spruce Mountain Primary School. Page thirty, line six seventy-six, a rate increase of property insurance. Unfortunately, that goes up every year, so. And some of this will be repetitive throughout each school. Line, I mean, page thirty, line six seventy-nine, general supplies, which is our cleaning supplies, chemicals, paper products, trash bags, gloves, et cetera. That's an increase of a thousand dollars. Inflation, everything goes up for some reason, so hopefully sometime it'll go down. And then I have Spruce Mountain Elementary School. Page thirty, line six ninety, repairs, maintenance of equipment, which that has to do with our HVAC, which is the heating ventilation and air conditioning. Of each unit, obviously, the elementary doesn't have air conditioning, but custodial equipment and all mechanical items, increase of a thousand there. Same thing. We got a thing from Siemens the other day, a letter from Siemens the other day that said that possibly increases because a lot of this stuff comes from overseas. So be, be aware of that, so. Page thirty, line six ninety-four, the rate increase of property insurance again of one thousand eighty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. And then go to the middle school. Page thirty-one, line seven, one, two, seven, twelve, property insurance rate increase of two thousand eight hundred, thirty dollars and four cents. And again, page thirty-one, line seven fifteen, general supplies, increase there of two thousand. Use a little bit more supplies over there due to the size of the building. Takes a lot there, so. And then on to the high school. Page thirty-two, line seven twenty-four, contracted professionals, annual contracts, trash, overhead doors, pest management roofs. That's an increase of two thousand four hundred and seven dollars. Page thirty-two, line seven twenty-six, repairs, maintenance, which is equipment, HVAC, that's another thousand dollars. Just, just because, again, the increases of, of parts. Page thirty-two, line seven twenty-eight, repairs and maintenance of the building. That's all electrical, plumbing, carpentry, roof repairs, an increase of a thousand. We've got a lot of old, old pipes here, and also the electrical with some of the breakers. More costly now where they're a lot, a lot older, it's hard to find. Page thirty-two, line seven thirty, property insurance rate increase of two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. And this is where we put the, the lease for the truck, which is page thirty-two, line seven thirty-seven. Two thousand twenty-five F three fifty dump truck to replace the GMC dump truck that we have currently now. We're doing that over a three-year lease, thirty thousand dollars for impact there. And then we'll go to system-wide, which consists of central office, and also deals with all facility, facilities as well. Page thirty-two, line seven forty-five, contracted professionals. This is the annual contracts, again, with overhead doors, pest management roofs, et cetera. One thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars. Page thirty-two, line seven forty-eight, waste removal, we have that through Casella Waste. We're contracted with them for the next two years, I believe it is. That's an increase of a thousand dollars this year for that. Page thirty-three, line seven forty-nine, snow removal, we're contracted, of course, with Gene Castongway Logging. That's an increase of a thousand dollars for that contract. And heating oil, which is, ah, page thirty-three, seven fifty-seven, that's a rate increase of one thousand eighty dollars. Just due to the impact of oil fluctuating going up, so. And I think that is it.
All right, thank you, any questions for Wayne? See none, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Adult and Community Education, Robin?
Okay. So a few changes, and probably initial sticker shock, but I will explain how those work out. So line fourteen, postage.
What page, what page are you on, I'm sorry?
That's a good question, I'm not sure on the entire book.
Oh, hand it out. I apologize.
You say section four? Section four.
Section four in the book? Oh, section four.
Good? Are you still looking?
Is it just the adult ed handout? Okay.
Does anyone need a copy? Good, okay.
So it's this handout that you had in your packets? Thank you, sorry.
No, you're fine, I wanted to make sure that we're all looking at the same document. Line fourteen is postage, the cost of postage continues to increase. We mail catalogs to over five thousand homes and have tracked the effectiveness of those mailings in relation to enrollments. So that is increasing by eighteen hundred. The next line is workforce invoke ready, lines twenty-four through twenty-seven. There you'll see two new positions, one being a CDL contracted instructor, the other being a workforce coordinator. So that increased together shows about a one hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar impact as an increase. But we'll also go down into the local literacy lines and see where that cost is offset in another place in the budget. So the workforce coordinator position is going to be repurposed from our current admin assistant and marketing outreach role. Which will become a reduced position. And you'll, like I said, you'll see that in the local literacy line below. And the salary line for the CDL instructor will be paid through adult education subsidies. So there'll be no added local share costs for FY twenty-six for those positions. And then jumping down to line forty-two through forty-seven, those are the local literacy lines that I talked about. That admin position will become part-time, and monies from those lines will help support the workforce coordinator role. So that's a decrease of roughly seventy-five thousand dollars. So there's, like I said, there's no cost increase through the local share, but the budget does go up by eighty-five thousand. And again, that'll be covered by adult education, adult education subsidies and carryover funds.
Thank you, any questions for Robin, Roger?
Do we have a truck or vehicle for these people to learn their CDL on?
Yes, that's the grant, so the grant covers everything except for personnel, which is.
Oh, that's right, you said that, okay.
Yeah, so that's why we have the CDL instructor.
Awesome, thank you.
In this, yep, you're welcome.
Anybody else have questions for Robin? Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome, thank you.
Food service, Laura?
What's up? First, we're gonna start, and I hope I'm not gonna jinx myself, by decreasing our repair line, repair and maintenance by five thousand dollars. We've done a lot of capital, equipment improvement, and I'm anticipating that we'll have less, hopefully, in our repairs. So that's a decrease of five thousand dollars. What was line number four, I'm sorry, I should've led with that. Line number six was the travel line, I am proposing that that be increased by five thousand six hundred and seventy-five. So that myself and staff, two to three staff members can attend the National School Nutrition Association Conference in July. Which was a part of the spend-down plan that I, we had put together, Scott and I and Crystal, in the fall for the state of Maine. Line number nine is food line, and it's an anticipated increase of food cost. And there is an error on there, that should be twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine, I wish it was two, two thousand dollars, but it should be twenty-two. And that is the standard anticipating of a three percent food cost increase, which is pretty, pretty standard, if we can keep it at three percent, I think we'll be doing well with what we've been seeing in the past few years. Line number eleven is equipment line, and that line is gonna cover the new equipment and cafeteria updates. Again, once again, that's in the spend-down plan, and that is three hundred and twenty thousand dollars there increase. And then in lines one, two, and three, wages and benefits, and there, I don't have the impact out there broken out. But we are asking to increase one staff member as well as the standard increase in wages for all of the staff. So for our overall budget, there is no local support. This is all within the food service budget and our spend-down plan, so.
Very good, any questions? Ah, Elaine? Sarah?
All right, I just wanna clarify again, a little discrepancy on line nine, in our pamphlet it says twenty-eight hundred.
Mm-hmm, it should be twenty-two thousand.
Okay, that's what's in the box.
It was a typo when they did them, sorry.
Yeah, do you have a question, Lee? Oh, okay. Any other questions for Laura?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, debt services.
Okay, on page thirty-three of your first section, debt service, it stays the same as last year. This is for Siemens one and Siemens two work. These amounts will be up in the year two thousand thirty-four. I won't be here, and I'm not sure if many of you will still be on the board in two thousand thirty-one, maybe? You never know, Dawn? Are there any questions right now on debt service? And then all other is also on page thirty-three, that's contingency, it's the same as last year. It's a hundred thousand dollars, which we've kept in the last probably five or six years. In case something comes up that we hadn't planned for. We have to have it in the budget so we don't have to go up to the town and ask for another vote for things. At one time it was up over two hundred thousand dollars, and we brought it down over the past five years. And luckily, we haven't had to spend it, and we'd like to keep it that way.
Any questions for Scott?
Just a big reminder, March sixth, next Thursday, we are, it said snow date, we've had snow dates, so we are having that meeting. And it's only on the budget that night, we're not anything else during that meeting, it's only the budget. When you take this stuff home, if you go through it, if you have questions, please email me, okay? So that way we'll have the answers for you when you get to the meeting. If you wait till the meeting, we might have the answers for you, but this way you'd be guaranteed that you have the answers. Couple of things in here that wasn't mentioned before, a couple new positions. I had mentioned it at a, I think it was a transportation meeting, cuz someone was asking. At the elementary school and primary school, they're looking to add a dean of students. We've talked about behavior issues and allowing the principals to get into the classrooms more. Instead of just adding a whole position, what we've done is, we know there's a retirement in the secretary position at the primary school. So what we're hoping to do is have one secretary, one dean of students. That's kinda worked at the middle school for us over the years, and that, they can overlap and do things. A lot of times, the dean of students is taking care of attendance, but also taking care of behaviors. Can make phone calls home. You really don't want your secretaries having to chase a kid down the hallway for other issues. Pat's wanted it for a while too, he's given up a half a secretary in order to do that. So like I said, it's not one full position, brand-new positions coming in, we're taking some away. And the other difference you'll see in the budget is at the middle school. We've had a dean of students here for a long time, he's done a great job. But we believe in order to bring in somebody new at the primary and elementary school, you kinda have to put them on the teacher's scale when it comes to pay. So if we do that, and you guys approve that, we will be bumping up the salary for that person at the middle school to be fair across the board.
Any questions? All right, you have your co-curriculars, I would, as Scott said, we do have that special meeting, March sixth. We also have a school board meeting on March thirteenth. And March twenty-seventh, and there'll be a finance committee meeting at five-thirty on March twenty-seventh. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Lena? Lena, Roger, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.